Good to see you.
Here we go. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. Welcome to Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today is November the 5th, 2020. We appreciate your attendance and those that are with us online. We'll get right into the new business that we have. First up, we have a presentation of fiscal year 2021 Emergency Management Performance Grant, Emergency Services Director Danny Thompson. Danny?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. What I have before you is the annual Emergency Performance Grant. It's that time of the year. You've kind of alluded to it in the past about how GMA has changed to the online portal. So I get a notification that the grant's ready and it's due, and when I submit it, it turns around and is approved in about 24 hours now. So the grant has actually been submitted because the deadline was two weeks ago in between commission sessions. So as you are familiar, this is a 50-50 matching grant. It supports many of our needs from the EMS, from the EMA activities. We use the funding for our RAV Alerting System, Weather Siren Maintenance, and to purchase and offset some of the turnout gear for firefighters throughout the year. The grant total is 15,568 with a matching portion of 7,784. Obviously, this will begin in FY21 and the funds will be available. Just looking tonight to give the approval, and since we've already got the approval from GMA for this, if it's okay to push it to the voting session to have it ratified.
Can you budget it for this in the upcoming?
We budget for it every year.
What does RAV stand for? R-A-V?
It's the name, it's just the name of the company, but that's the SMART 911 that for weather notifications and stuff of that nature. You may have received some here recently. We had a little weather event in case y'all didn't realize.
Did you, did something happen?
Yeah.
It did?
Yeah. For those of you that just got power.
The whole time.
For those of you that just got power in the last 24 hours, congratulations.
Yeah, the power wasn't on. I didn't see anything that happened.
Other questions for Danny?
But this is going to tonight then?
Yes, sir.
I'm fine with it.
Next up, we have a presentation of request to apply for the Georgia Forestry Commission Volunteer Fire Assistance 50-50 Grant. Danny's gonna do that as well.
It is, it is. I'm competing against Jamison. I get a little, he always has those zoning requests, so I want to get a little airtime, a little airtime. So this one, Georgia hasn't quite put into the grants portal system, so we still do paper on this one. So this is the Georgia Forestry Annual 50-50 Grant. It's up to 10,000. Again, the grant period closes on December 1st. We'd like permission to go ahead and submit if we could. We have the ability to wait and vote on this at the, I think it's the 19th voting session. Is that correct? Okay, so yeah, we can wait till then and all the paperwork's already done to submit it. We typically use this to help offset fire hose, some wildland firefighting gear and that type of stuff. So, and again, this will be an FY21 and we will have the funds to support it. I'll answer any questions. It's 10,000, so it's a 50-50, so we'll be obligated for five.
Other questions for Chief Thompson?
Stand there. Next, we have a presentation request for fundraiser to benefit emergency services. Danny?
All right, this is my last one, so. All right, several weeks ago, we were approached by Alex Williams, who is with the Modern Woodman of America. And for those of you who don't know a little bit about them, they're one of the third largest fraternal benefit societies. They work with a lot of local communities, a lot of local volunteer projects that make a difference where the members live, work, and play. Alex approached us about a fundraiser for the fire department. She has a little bit more detail about this type of fundraiser, but the general concept is, is there would be a 31-gun raffle. The tickets would be approximately $40. The date that we plugged in there, that's a moving date. It'll actually be sometime in '21, but we wanted to get the approval first. But over a 31-day calendar period, they would basically give a gun away to those people who the tickets have been raffled. They'll sell up to a maximum of 1,000 tickets. So there's the opportunity that if we sold everything at that $40, that the fire department could benefit somewhere around about, you know, $15,000, $20,000. And as you all know, as we, you know, come to you for budget needs, there'd be the potential there for us to offset some equipment cost. And so we at the fire department are always open and look for grants and various other measures to be able to provide some of that equipment gaps that we may have and everything else. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I'll also be happy to invite Ms. Williams up and she may be able to answer. I think I put in the packet, it's kind of a template of how the process works, and she also has something in the packet there. And then the calendar, you'll see kind of the flow of how the raffle would go. We're looking at probably starting, if it gets approved, start this process in January, close it out at the end of February, and then March would have 31 days and do the giveaway at that point. With that, I will answer any questions, and if I can't answer it, this nice lady, Ms. Alex Williams will.
Has this been done before in any other communities?
Yes.
Yes.
Pretty standard thing.
Yeah, one of our other representatives, she's in Mississippi. She's been doing it for about six years, and this is, it's all templated off of what she's done.
How many tickets can I buy tonight?
I don't have them ready yet, but if you want to buy all thousands, we're happy to.
I assume, Ms. County Attorney, that this is okay. I mean, this is, it's okay to do a fundraiser and?
It has not, I haven't been apprised of it or been involved with it. You know, so I can certainly speak with the chief more about any of the details if he would like me to do that. I mean, I think typically when I heard that this was, when he started talking, I thought it might be a boot drive or something because that's a very common thing that fire departments do, but I'm not familiar with this particular effort. So I'd be happy to look at it. Since it's on work session, are we trying to approve something tonight?
No.
Okay.
You know, I've seen like civil tan club and other clubs do this, but I've never seen like a government.
Right. I'm not sure that I have either, so I'd be happy to look at it.
I don't think it's, I guess you're asking for permission to raise the funds to give them to us. That's really all we're per, you can still do it external of what we say. I mean, other than you want to give the money to the fire department.
This group can do it? Is that what you're suggesting, Commissioner Gaines? Yes, I mean, a group could.
The fire department to donate.
We will not be selling anything while we're doing.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So she's handling everything.
The only reason why you're here is to say, Kent, will you be able to take the money if we raise the money?
Oh, well, if that's the case, then I'm sure it's gonna be fine. I was understanding, I think, like Commissioner Gaines, perhaps that you're actively involved with soliciting, so there wouldn't be any of that.
That's what I thought. Maybe y'all would be selling the tickets and, no, I didn't know.
Yes, I'll give you the raffle.
Okay, I'll take a look at this and we can chat.
So they will be selling tickets?
Just not in uniform. Yeah, it would have to be like a volunteer.
And that's, and that's okay? I mean?
Well, let's talk about that. I'll take a look at this and I'll give you my opinion, work with the chief, and then get back to you before you have to see this in the next voting session.
Yeah, they're not, I mean, if you win, they're not giving you a gun. They're giving you a voucher to go to a gun store that's, that runs the background checks and all that, so they're not going to issue their gun theirself. I mean, this, I've seen these in different areas. We do one at the lodge, and it's like I said, we give them a certificate, and they go to whoever's, they get the guns from, and they do all the background. So they're not going to rifle a gun and give somebody a gun that.
We won't be distributing.
They won't be handing guns out.
You, you will or won't?
Will not.
Will not, yeah. I've just never, I've just never seen it with the government. You know, I've seen it with the clubs, but not this, so it's just, I mean, and I'm all about money in the budget. I love it, but I want it to be legal and right, you know, and cause no problems, so.
The representative that does this in Mississippi, she raises the funds for her sheriff's department. And so if, if you need extra insider information, I can always get her on the phone and she'll be happy to talk through all the legal aspect of all that, too.
You chose them, okay.
What's your role with Modern Woodman?
I'm a financial advisor.
For Dawson County?
Yes. Yes, our office is located in front of the movie theaters. Behind the urgent care in those offices.
Well, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just never have seen this.
So the, I've already talked to Chase Walls at Freedom Mill. They're, they used to be country folks off of Highway 9, and he's done a similar project like this with another organization. I'm not exactly sure who it was, but he was saying right now with the gun shortages, that essentially what we would do is we would do a gift card amount for that gun that they want on that certain day. They either come in and they can purchase the gun, it will have all the information, or they can use those funds for anything in the store. So if they don't want the gun, because, you know, some people want to support the fire department, but they're like, why care less about the gun? So they can use the funds for something else in the store as well.
There's a shortage of guns.
Apparently.
There is.
You didn't have any power, so.
I was in the dark. I'm, I got behind. I'm telling you real behind. I was born behind.
Other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of IFB number 372-20, Harry Sosby Road, Lumpkin Campground Road Roundabout, Public Works Director David McKee and Purchasing Manager Melissa Hawke. David, you gonna do that?
Melissa, if I need some help, she can bail me out, maybe. I'll take my mask down here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What I'm here before you this afternoon is kind of bringing full circle, some discussions we had dating back really a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, as it relates to this particular project. A little bit of background and overview. Back in June of 2019, this board approved the master plan and zoning conditions for a large residential development off of Harry Sosby Road. And if you'll recall, as part of that, we were able to negotiate and the developer reconstructed and rebuilt the realignment of, there's a whole lot of re's there, realignment of Harry Sosby Road as, as part of their cost, as well as I was able to get the design cost done for this roundabout. So after many, many months of going back and forth with the designers, we've completed that design and we have allocated approximately $2 million for this project for SLOX 6. So, so bringing that back full circle where we are today, that design's been done. We've put that design out to bid. And, and that's, that's what we have here before you, and I'll be presenting the, the results of that bid. Invitation was released on September the 9th of this year, and that's a turnkey lump sum of the, the roundabout construction. We bid it according to our policy, as you're accustomed to seeing. We did receive five bids, I believe a couple of those, well, we'll get into the, to the actual bids. Little bit of the scope of work, it is what you would typically see with a traffic circle around about. It's, it's not, this is not as big as what you would see on the state route, like State Route 53 and 183. It's a little smaller than that. However, it is, it does meet the DOT standards. Tractor and trailers will be able to get through it. It's also nothing near as small as what you see further south on 9E at, in the Forsyth County. The roads completely slipped my mind, but if, AC Smith, thank you. It's not, it's not near that small. So it's a, it's a DOT roundabout. It will have a little bit of landscaping, not like what you see at DOT. We'll probably have a tree and grass, just what's, what's at Dawson Forest and Lumpkin Campground now. One note here, I do have a typo and I'll take responsibility for that. Landscaping shows is in this contract, although the landscaping will be on the county. When the contractor's done, they're just going to grass it and then we'll go in and plant a tree. The only reason I didn't put that is because we don't know exactly when the timeframe will be completed, and I don't want trees planted and then they die or whatever that is. So we'll plant those and we'll plant the grass. And then moving forward, obviously, we would maintain it and everything from there. Let me go back to the scope for just a second. If you're, if you're familiar with that area at all, there's a creek that runs just on the south side of this intersection. The, the pipes that go under the road are severely undersized. As part of this project, there is an arch culvert, so those culverts will be removed, and a new arch culvert is, is, is going to be installed. There will have to be a road closure for approximately 30 days to take the old culverts out and put the new culverts in. There's simply no way around it. So as part of this, we will be closing the road for 30 days.
Is that Lumpkin Campground or Harry Sosby?
Lumpkin Campground, that's correct. Now, we have a detour route in place. Nobody will be displaced. And, and we're going to coordinate with the developer so that that portion of Harry Sosby Road is completed before we close Lumpkin Campground Road, so that they could go up, the new Harry Sosby and go up to Goodson and get their way back around to Lumpkin Campground Road. As you're aware, it does run parallel to 400, so it'll have to be a whole lot of signage and everything like that. But as part of this scope, I do want to make sure that it is very clear that there will be a 30-day, we've allowed the contractor up to 30 days. And that is just to rip the old culverts out, put the new arch culverts in, and then they have to open the road. From then on, we're going to be doing it in phases, much like what you see at Highway 9 South at Dawson Forest Road. That's a lot bigger project because you have two of these essentially, but it will be in phases. They'll be moving, moving traffic around quite, quite regularly.
What time of year is this project let and what time of year will that 30-day window be?
So it is, the project is, we're, I'm going to request that the board move this forward to the 19th. And when we get approval, I'm so sorry, when we get approval, if we get approval on the 19th, we'll immediately notify the contractor. It is approximately a 10-week build time of the culvert. So you can add probably two or three more weeks for plans, some middles going back and forth. So let's say 14, 15 weeks from the date we sign the contract, and I won't allow them to start removing the old culvert until the new culvert's sitting on site, ready to go. So 14, 15 weeks from, from the date we, from the 19th, so we're looking at probably March, April timeframe before we would rip the, the old, close the road, and then again, it'd be that 30-day timeframe. Probably April, May.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we, if we could get it into the summer months when school's not impacted, that would, that would probably greatly help our school traffic where if it winds up being post-closure of school in the spring, that would.
And I've had some very elementary-level conversations with the school system, and regardless of when that is, there's, and as, as do I.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
You said elementary.
There you go. As well as emergency services, there's going to be some, some services that are displaced with, potential services displaced with that as well. Again, there's, we've beat our heads against the wall. There's really no way around it. And, and from a timing standpoint, I don't want to delay this anymore than perhaps we have. I don't want to be too far behind the contractor. There's nothing worse than seeing construction get done here and we immediately start over here. You know, so we're trying to just piggy, piggyback and dovetail off of what they've done. Oh, yeah, we're not, we're not starting at a good time. We, again, we did receive five bids, A1 Contracting, Caldwell Construction, CW Matthews, North Georgia Concrete, and Vertical Earth. Vertical Earth is in the far right-hand column, appears red to me. The, the first two, they didn't require, they didn't submit some phasing plans as required, but they were, you can see they were a little bit higher there. The, to note here that Vertical Earth was the low bid. We asked for two different options. The two different options you see there would be closing the road for the entire length of the project, which really is not an option, but we just wanted to see what that pricing was. And then closing the road for the, the top option was a road closure for 30 days, which would allow them to rip the pipe in and out and go from there. So staff requests that the board accept the bid submitted and award the contract to Vertical Earth Contracting in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,139,463.18. I'm also asking for a 10% contingency for a total of $1,253,410.18. And this is utilized SLOX 6 funds. Again, we, this is under what we had budgeted. Question, what is the 10% for? Unforeseen conditions, so that if we're over, you know, $200, I don't have to come back before the board and, and ask for that. We would go through our contingency protocol. The county manager would have to approve that. It would also allow us for some light landscaping, trees or whatever when, when the project's done. And I'll attempt to answer any questions.
David, you can toss a hat over several of these bids, and we have an outlier that is high side of 2.2, and then we have Vertical Earth, a million-dollar difference. Sometimes I have concerns, although I do like low prices on this stuff, but I do have concerns when we see a drastic difference like that. Is there anything that you foresee that's driving that, could, that could cause issues down the road? I mean, obviously going by the low bid is a good responsibility, but when, we'll make sure that Vertical Earth's doing tons of stuff around here, I know, and they're good, good quality carrier. That's just a big variation.
Yeah. If you, so Caldwell Construction bids on a lot. They bid on an awful lot. And, and my experience on our county projects, Caldwell's also always been on that high end. And I, and I agree with you. However, if you take Caldwell out, you're right, you can set a hat over the, the other four. Yeah, then, then the verticals. But no, I, I don't, I don't foresee any issues and I don't have any concern that, that they have lowballed it and don't have the money to complete the job nor the staff or anything else.
Do we require bonds in this system?
We do, absolutely. They are also the prime contractor at 9 South in Dawson Forest, and they've done a number of other road projects. And, and they've got quite a, quite a resume list that we could, that we have gone through and checked.
They also have about 200 and something employees, so that may drive some of it, that they want to keep them busy and they can be.
Fairly local there for Forsyth County.
They're good people. We're just, just kind of kicking themselves for under cutting it.
Other questions for Dave?
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of 2020 Capital Improvement Element Adoption Plan Development Director Jameson Kinley. James?
Chairman? So back on September 3rd, I presented before you our capital improvement element update for the fiscal year of 2019. It has, from that point, we, the board voted to transmit that over to the GMRC and DCA for their approval. It came back with one comment, which we addressed. It didn't change any of the, the verbiage, it didn't change any, what we collected, it didn't change what we were going to spend things on or any type of the financial statements. But we addressed that comment. We got it back to them. They have officially accepted it. It is now time for the adoption resolution to be signed and turned over to them. This does affect our QLG, which is, makes us a qualified local government for a lot of our grants. And I would, today, we're asking that this document be signed or considered to be signed next, next voting session. And I will entertain any questions.
Tonight or next, or 19?
We can wait until the next voting session.
Makes sense of, what'd you say, qualified?
Qualified local government, QLG status with the.
Qualified local government.
Yes, ma'am.
And that ties back to some grants. You have to have that in order to apply for a lot of grants, so that's important.
Absolutely.
Other questions for James?
Next up, we have the presentation of third quarter financial report. Chief Financial Officer Vicki Knocker. Vicki?
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Since Chief Thompson had 15 minutes, I expect to get at least 16, so. Okay.
As long as you're talking about revenue and not expenses.
That's right. I have good news, so that's always, that's always extra. Um, this presentation is for the first, I'm sorry, for the third quarter of 2020. That quarter ends on September 30th, and so the main focus of this presentation, as normal, will be on the general fund because that is our main operating fund. The benchmark for the third quarter is 75%. So if you see anything for revenues that are higher than that, then that's a plus. If you see anything higher than that for expenses, it's kind of a negative, so just kind of keep that in mind. The original budget for general fund was 29.9 million. At the end of September, that budget was at a little over 31 million. Revenue total through the third quarter is 19.7 million, and that's 63.5% of the budget. Expenditure is at 19.5, which is at 62.8%, and this is really good news because we normally don't break even until the end, after the third quarter. So we were able to do that a little earlier this year. Okay, so the prior year comparison for general fund, I thought this was kind of important to point out. As I said earlier, our revenues this year are at 19.7, expenditures are at 19.5. Last year at the same time, the revenues were at 18.3 and expenditures were at 20. So to me, that's, that's very good. Okay, and so this next slide just kind of breaks out all the revenues according to their type. If you'll see on the taxes, our budget is at 15.4 million, and we are at 73% of the budget. The 49.68, that is the amount that taxes, property tax, or all taxes other than loss makes up of the budget. Like, all the taxes other than loss make up 49.68% of what's budgeted for this year. For our local option, sales tax, we're at year-to-date 5.2 million, or 64% of budget. Loss makes up 26.28% of this year's budget. Licenses and permits, this year we are at 865,000. Licenses and permits, this year we are at 865,000 or 68% of the budget and licenses and permits make up 4% of the budget. Charges for services, we're at one point, almost 1.5 million for the year or 72% of budget and we're at six point and it makes up 6.6% of the budget. Intergovernmental revenues are at 381,000, fines and forfeitures are at 171,000. Investment income is at 57,000, donations almost 34,000 and miscellaneous is at 116,000. Other financing sources are at 14,000 for total, as I said earlier, 19.7 million. So as everyone knows, we have in 2020 been experiencing COVID-19 and so we've had revenues that we knew we could see potential impacts. Probably the largest would be our local option sales tax and I'm going to go into a little more detail on another slide on where we are compared from last year to this year. Also, property tax could be impacted. If the economy stalls or falters, if we see more people losing jobs or whatever, they may not be able to pay their taxes, so we may, we may see an impact from that, we're not for sure at this point. Charges for services, I think that we're kind of holding our own on that, we could see some impact for our park fees, but right now we're looking all right. I think for the most part, the court fines, this year we won't, we won't get what we budgeted because courts have been closed, so that's that's going to have a large impact. And then licenses and permits could potentially be impacted, but right now we're not seeing an impact, it's actually going gangbusters. It was, I know the people in the planning department said, you know, you'd never know COVID was going on because they were continually getting building permits and those kinds of things. Okay, so local option sales tax, let me go into a little comparison here for you. This shows each month through August, and the reason why that doesn't say September is because the month, the the collection that we get in September is actually for August, so we're always running a month behind. So this this chart shows what we received in 2019, the month of January versus what we received in 2020 for the month of January. Then the third column shows the change. So if you go down through there, you'll see that we had a couple of, three months straight where we showed a loss, March, April and May, which was to be expected because of the COVID. But then in June, we saw an increase of 10%. Then in July, we had a slight drop, it was pretty much break even, I think. And then in August, we had a huge jump from 642,000 to over a million. And the reason for that, though, it was a one-time correction by the Department of Revenue, there was one vendor that had not been remitting taxes correctly or something, we never really got the full story about it. But anyway, we we said, yeah, we'll take it, we're happy to get that extra money, so that'll help make up for the for the for the difference for March, April and May. But year to date, we're actually $216,000 higher in 2020 at the same time as we were in 2019 or 4.26% higher.
That that August outlier, it was just under 4, wasn't it, 396? Is that right? So we still would have been 650 versus 642, so we've still been been positive in that month too, a little bit, even without that outlier.
Yeah, so that's to me very good news. Okay, now we'll look at the expenditure side of general fund. We have different functions that Gasky says that we have to like put all these departments together under these functions, and so you have general government, then these are the general government departments that make up general government function. So we've got your Board of Commissioners and this shows the budget for 2020, current budget, and then year to date actual, and then the percent of budget. So if you go down through there, everyone is below, at or below the 75% benchmark.
Risk management's not.
Well, let's see, risk management, they're not, and that's because their bill will come in at one time, and so it kind of has to catch up by the end of the year. So by the end of the year, it should be just fine. Yeah, it'll catch up by the end of the year.
And just so everybody knows, that Board of Commissioners is not our salary, that's a big bucket that catches a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot of other expenses that go in there other than just salaries. And so the total budget for all these general government departments is 5.9 million and year to date, we're at 3.8 or 64.49% of budget. Okay, so the next function we'll look at is the judicial. And that makes up all the different courts that are accounted for in the general fund and all of these are at or below the 75% other than public defenders, just a little bit over, and I'm sure that by the end of the year, they'll make up that that difference will be made up. So the total judicial branch is 3.5 million, we're at 2.4 or 68.25% of budget. Okay, we'll look at the sheriff and the sheriff has multiple departments and we always separate him out of normal public safety just because he isn't a constitutional officer and I think people like to see that split out from the rest of public safety. All the sheriff's departments budgets total 8.6 million and he is at 5.8 or 67.74% of the budget and all of his departments are under the 75% benchmark. Okay, the other public safety departments, their their budgets total up to 4.3 million. Currently, they're at 2.2 or 51.35% of the budget. This will look a little different for fire and EMS because when we had to do the transfer for the CARES Act, we actually moved budget and expenses for fire and EMS over to that CARES Act grant funding. So it kind of makes it look a little smaller because it actually did decrease their budget and expenses. Okay, next, Public Works, and we have Public Works Administration and then the Roads Department. Total budget for those two departments is 1.9 million, we're at 1.3 or 67.52% of what's budgeted. Health and welfare, majority of this is other agencies that we help fund, like the Health Department, Good Shepherd, CASA. We do have the senior center in here, some of their expenditures are paid for out of the general fund, but the majority of it is from grant funding. So total for the health and welfare is 371,000, year to date is at 181,000 or 48.9% of the budget. And we'll look at Recreation and Culture, that's the park and the library, and total for these budgets is 1.7 million, year to date is at 1.1, almost 1.2 or 67.8% of the budget. And the park pool, they're at 100% of their budget because their summer season is over and it all comes at one time. Housing and Development, that's made up of conservation, planning and the County Extension Office. Total budget is 869,000, I'm sorry, and the Development Authority. Total year to date is at 607,000 or 69.84%. Okay, we have other financing uses and this is all the transfers that we do out to Family Connection for grants, you'll see this new one transfer out to CARES Act, we transferred 1.1 million, transfer out to Capital, 275,000, Fleet, 911 and the GIS. Total for a budget for all these other financing uses is 3.6 million, year to date, we're at 1.9 or 52%. The county has always said that their employees are their biggest asset and I think this kind of proves that. When you look at all the expenses of general fund broken down by category, you'll see that almost 62% of every dollar spent year to date of the general fund has gone to the employees in either salaries or benefits. We've had a few additions to the budget in 2020. We've had the salary changes resulting from the salary study, we increased the retirement contribution, we did a land use resolution update and then we just recently added 15,000 for the sheriff's heat grant. Fund balance, that's always the big question, well, what have we got in fund balance? Well, as of 9:30, we had unassigned fund balance of 5.4 million, which is 17.65% of budgeted expenditures and the board wants to stay between 15 and 25%. So that's where we are at the end. Now, fund balance changes constantly, depends on, you know, how much cash you have, what your expenses are, so it's constantly moving, but that's where we were as of 9:30.
That's usually your lowest point during the year, is that correct?
Yeah, it normally is this time of year. Yeah, this is the unassigned.
Fun balance for assigned stuff.
Yeah.
The past four years, we've not used any of the money that we've assigned in the in the budget has fund balance.
That's right. Okay, so then we have other funds other than general fund, we have 911. And this chart shows their budget and then the year to date revenues and the year to date expenditures. So 911, they're they're running pretty equal between revenues and expenses, you know, we do supplement 911 with general fund. Family Connection, they're a little bit showing a little bit of a net loss and that's just because of the timing on their funding that they get back from their grant. The Grants Fund, same thing, there's always a timing issue with the grants because we spend the money and then we ask for the reimbursement. Hotel Motel is one that has really had a hard time this year because of COVID. We budgeted 450,000, but we've only received 224 through the end of September. SPOLOX, we are doing very well with SPOLOX, just like we are with the local option sales tax. And Capital Projects, we spent $970,000 year to date. The Solid Waste Fund, their budget is 971,000. We've received 406,000 in revenue and spent 442,000. And I've talked to Mr. McKee and he feels sure that, you know, this will even out during the year. And they do have some, you don't really call it net position, but they have some carryover from prior years that would help make up any kind of deficit. Impact fees, that's been a really good, this has been a really good year for impact fees. Through the end of September, we've collected 813,000 and we've spent 627,000. Ivy Senior Center, their budget is 729,000, they will spend all, they have spent, they have spent all the money this year from the generous donation that we received. And the only revenue there, that's just interest, that 1,500, that would just be interest. Okay, so I thought you might want to see the comparison like I did for loss with the SPOLOX. The change every month, you'll see that same thing in March, April and May, we were showing a trend of, you know, downward downward trend, but then we made up for it in August. So the dollar change from last year, 19 to 20 is $253,000 or 4.3%. And Dawsonville does receive 15% of each month's receipt. Year to date SPOLOX expenditures total 3.9 million and this shows how it's broken down between each of the activities that are given money from SPOLOX, you have information technology, sheriff, fire, roads is the largest percentage, parks and then payments to city. At the end of September, we had 4.4 million encumbered for projects that are in process. Impact fees, impact, impact fees were reinstated in 2018 and since that time, over 1.2 million has been collected. Impact fees can only be used for capital improvement related to growth in the county, cannot be used for salaries and other regular maintenance repairs and operations. There are four departments that are authorized use of these funds and that's the library, parks, fire and roads. So far, since 2018, we kind of had to let the money accumulate a little bit, we spent 122,000 on a fire truck, we spent 615 on park expansion and 12,000 for the library and that's where they've been buying a lot of books to increase their circulation. So in conclusion, it's my opinion that, and I think the numbers speak to this, that Dawson County has appeared to weather the COVID storm so far. Financial data is continually being monitored in order to protect current resources. Continued commitment to maintain conservative spending will keep the county in a positive financial position. Economic and political influences could have an impact on future financial decisions. Anyway, you have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Vicki.
I love when you do these, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I know it.
You're welcome.
It takes a lot.
It well.
I love it.
Well, I like doing it, it does take time to do it, but I do like doing it, I feel like it's important for you all to get this and I think it's important for the citizens to know that their money is being spent in the way it should be spent.
We've got to know where we stand.
That's right. All right, no questions, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki, thank you and your staff, outstanding job, as you always do.
Also, David and your staff and the elected officials for taking the COVID-19 situation that we've had to deal with this year very seriously and as you can see, each and every one of them basically have kept their budget below where they should be at this particular time of year and so we appreciate your diligence and things that you've done to make sure that we're able to continue to provide quality services to our citizens and I feel even though you've worked well with your budgets, we have provided those quality services throughout this year. And so appreciate each and every one of you for what you do for Dawson County and for our citizens. Thank you very much.
And it demonstrates their fiscal responsibility.
Yes, ma'am.
I love it.
All right, let's move on to number seven, presentation of 2021 supplements for elected officials, human resources director Brad Gould. Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening Commissioners. Every year we receive a supplement or a guide for county commissioners, county elected officials' salaries for the for the next year. This year, we received it for 2021, comes from ACCG. And what I've done is what we receive is what, based on our census of the population, is what various elected officials should receive and pay. And then that's broken down into some COLAs and some supplements, some of these supplements are statutory and some of the supplements are approved by local commissions if they see fit to do that. This year, they did things a little bit differently, ACCG went back and for most of the positions, they eliminated eliminated all the COLAs and they went back to, you know, early 2000, but they upped the base salary. And most of the statutory supplements stayed the same. That's pretty easy to calculate and do, but I'm here tonight to talk to you about the local supplements. And if you remember, last year, we found that some supplements may have been paid in error, working with the county attorney, some resolutions were passed and that was corrected. And based on ACCG guidance, we need to or Commissioners need to approve local supplements at the beginning of the term for each elected official. So January 1st, 2021 will be new terms for these elected. So January 1st, 2021 will be new terms for these elected officials, and I'm here to present that to you. I'd like to start with the Chief Magistrate position, and then we'll talk about the Tax Commissioner and the Sheriff's position as well. And so as I mentioned before, in July 2016, the Board of Commissioners granted 8,000 additional dollars in a supplement to that position. And this was confirmed in the voting session minutes of July 7th, 2016. In 2021, the Chief Magistrate's salary was, will be 67,567. And that's including the COLAs I talked about as well. And that also talks about any, includes any statutory supplements they may have. So what we need to look at is, are we going to carry over that $8,000 supplement for that position starting January 1st, 2020? And the other issue we're looking at is the new Chief Magistrate was given a supplement in his prior position at, for $1,815.28. And after speaking with the current magistrate judge, she felt that that should be presented to the board because it is a pay for performance and move that over with Judge Tarnacki as he moves. And that, again, would need to be voted on the board. So in July of 2016, an additional supplement was granted by the Board of $5,384 to the magistrate position. And that, again.
As Associate.
Correct. It's titled as magistrate and in chief. But, and that, again, was confirmed by the voting session minutes of July 7th, 2016. So moving forward in 2021, that position's salary, as outlined by ACCG, and again, including all COLAs and statutory supplements, is $58,753.92. And again, talking with the outgoing magistrate, Judge Tarnacki, and looking at salaries in the area and speaking with the magistrate, the chief magistrate, Judge Thurman, they felt that it'd be, we should keep that 5,384 with that position, which would bring that salary to 63,553.8. And again, we're going to move the supplement that was approved at that time, the 1,815.28 from that position with Judge Tarnacki to the Chief Magistrate position. Any questions about those two positions so far or what I've discussed?
I'll have a comment in reference to these two positions. And as you have stated here, you're making a recommendation that those dollar amounts be continued. And I know some of y'all were on the board at that particular time, and that money was granted to the position, not the person. And that was granted to the position based on the fact of the number of hours that the Chief Magistrate and the Associate Magistrate were required to work. It's one of the few elected positions in the county that is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And so I agree with Brad's recommendation that those supplements continue for those two positions. And Tony is also here as well. He's your newly-elected Chief Magistrate. If you have any questions for him, I'd send him an email requesting that he come so that if y'all had any specific questions for him about this job and the amount of time that he has to put to make this job work, then you could ask him directly.
Can't hear you.
Sign your name and address.
Judge Tarnacki for magistrate. I'm looking at next year and trying to find a judge to take my place that is an attorney that can step in and day one be ready to go. He's currently a part-time judge of ours. I'm hoping that he takes the position. But again, the supplement, whether or not it's available to him, is largely probably going to make that decision for him if it's available to him. And that's kind of been the reason that I've been in contact with HR to try to figure this out because I want to go to him and make the offer, but it's hard to do that without a number. And so that's why we're trying to get that cleared up as soon as possible.
One other thing that we had discussed is the fact that, again, if this judge doesn't accept the position, it will keep us competitive with surrounding counties having that supplement in there, brings it up to that point. Right, so the Tax Commissioner, they're giving an amount of 4,197.36 as a statutory supplement. And if you remember last year, this was one of the issues we had where we had to sign the resolution. So there's nothing to do with that. So if the Board would like to do anything else as far as a supplement, that's something they would have to decide and speak with the Tax Commissioner about where she may or may not want to go with that. But the 4,197.36 is a statutory supplement. Nothing to do with that. We made the correction last year for the overpayment. She'll get this this year, and I left it at that. For the sheriff, he has a statutory supplement of $4,630.80. Again, no action is required on that supplement because that is, again, statutory and is included in his salary. The only question that we have is, again, last year, there was discovered that there was a supplement of $10,417 that ACCG originally paid out in 2002, and then they upped it to that amount in 2003. The prior sheriff had that amount, and it just carried through without any action. And again, we discovered that, again, with every term, this has to be approved. So that $10,417 would be up to the Board to prove that for the new term. That's all I have for you on that. Are there any questions?
Questions for Brad?
Excuse me a minute. What was the amount that Tony was talking about, the supplement amount that you needed to negotiate with the person? Was it the 1815.28?
15.30.
Okay.
Correct.
When he was in that position, he had a 15, but they're talking about shifting it to his new position.
Okay, okay.
Questions for Brad?
Chairman, one for the sheriffs. That's been there for 30 years.
20-plus years.
20-plus. I mean, that's been.
Yeah, it's a supplement that started back, actually Sheriff Chester. Y'all know way far back. Sheriff Carlisle received that supplement the whole 20 years that he was sheriff. And then that sheriff, that supplement has also been the past four years with our current sheriff. And so that has a lot of history and was provided, I'd say, 20-plus years to sheriffs that have served us in this community. And I would recommend that we leave those supplements as is for both magistrate positions as well as the sheriff. We'll take that up as a vote on the 19th. Any other questions for Brad?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Next up, we have Presentation of Correction to Previously Approved 2021 Holiday and Payroll Calendar. Brad's going to do that as well.
On September 17th, I presented to the Board the 2021 payroll and holiday calendar. It was voted on and approved on October 1st, 2020. After looking at it, it was brought, actually, it was brought to my attention that there was an error in it. I've corrected the error. You have that. Basically, we were looking at almost 27 pay periods in the calendar year. We operate on 26 pay periods. It's important, basically, for deductions. That's how our health insurance bills us, or actually, yeah, bills us. And this is just a correction shift in it. The payday falls on January 1st. Banks are closed, so we're rolling it. After working with finance, we're actually paying on the 31st of 2020, of December. It would have been that first payroll or pay period for 2021. But to keep it all in line with the way we've done things in the past, we just need to change those dates. Holidays stay the same, just the payroll calendar. Any questions?
Questions for Brad?
Thank you.
I do want to take a second and just thank the finance team for always helping us with the payroll calendar and then again with some of those salaries as well. Thank you.
Next up, we have our County Manager Report, David.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Along with the storm that we just experienced, along with the COVID that we've been going through, and now with the elections that have been going on, I thought it'd be a good idea to go ahead and just kind of show you some of the numbers that we've got for Dawson County during the vote. Dawson County saw record voter turnout for the general election this week. The county had 16,140 citizens, or 74.97%, vote out of 21,529 active registered voters in Dawson County. There were 10,393 advanced voters, 2,663 voted on Election Day, and 3,084 submitted absentee ballots by mail. So we had a very good turnout. Also, just a couple staff recognitions through this past storm that we had. I'd like to thank Herman Thompson, our IT Director, but especially Will Shattuck and Cameron Burt and Facilities who went above and beyond to keep voter registration up and running during the power outage following last week's storm so that voters were able to vote during those busy last two days of early voting. As many of you experienced, there was, Powers was out at, Powers was out here at the courthouse while handling the IT issues at voter registration, staff, I'm sorry, I thought somebody said, the, and the courthouse as well. They worked around the clock getting staff court services up and running and making sure that staff was ready to go on Monday. So kudos to them. Also, a big thank you to Public Works Emergency Services and Park and Recreation for their hard work and long hours to assist the citizens of Dawson County last week during Hurricane Zeta. Public Works estimated approximately 850 trees down. If any of you were driving around during then, you had to make many different trips around the county to try to get to where you were going. 15 and a half hours on Thursday, 10 hours on Friday, two crews working each day since then on the cleanup. Half the cleanup has already been completed, and by the week's end, they should have the remainder done. There's tons of free mulch at the transfer station for anybody that wants some, and that we have plenty of wood for the senior wood program this year. So this is a good year for wood at that point. Also, the Senior Center technology has been moved and is up and running at the new location. The opening for that will be coming up shortly. Also, should not come to anyone's surprise that our Finance Department has yet again received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association for the current fiscal period. This award is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting. So kudos to them. Stats for streaming meetings. It may be interesting for the citizens as well as the Commission to know some of the numbers that have been associated with the streamlining that we've been doing ever since that's been initiated. The Board of Commissioners Voting Session for August the 6th shows that 101 citizens are watching that meeting live, and that same meeting has been watched on Facebook approximately 2,600 times. The 2021 budget hearings for day one has been watched approximately 720 times, and day two approximately 266 times. The Citizens Government Academy has also been successful with the first three episodes being watched approximately 126 times. The Planning Commission has seen an increase in citizen participation. The August 18th meeting shows that approximately 60 citizens were watching live and has been watched on Facebook approximately 1,300 times. The county offices will be closed next Wednesday, November the 11th, for Veterans Day, and that would conclude my report.
Questions for David?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to all the staff who worked very diligently this past week in reference to the storm. And we have issues we're not going to tell. Y'all always step up, do exactly what you're required to, and appreciate that. I know our citizens appreciate that as well.
Now, County Attorney Report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I do not have a public report, but would request an executive session for a couple of items regarding pending litigation.
Okay, we will do that after we have our regular voting session. And with that, we will take a few-minute break to give everyone time to be prepared, and then we'll move into our voting session. So thank you for your attendance. Thank you to those that are watching us live, and we'll be back in a few minutes.